And. First, I'll be looking for a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And now I'm looking for um the resolution for declaring the mayor vacancy. In which we will have follow up action on tonight. So I'll be looking for a motion to declare the vacancy.
Standard protocol is to read a resolution.
Standard protocol is to what? Read a resolution. At a meeting, you need to read it.
Resolution two thousand twenty one oh five, acceptance of resignation as president of the city. Whereas the city council receives the resignation of Paul Manning as mayor of the city and is to effect it. June eighth, two thousand twenty one, now therefore give the county council. Minnesota's files, the council accept Paul Manning's resignation today.
As described above, the council declares that a vacancy exists for the position of mayor for the city of Henderson. And if it passed, if it did not man of it, it closes by past the date of and signatures.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dev three oh five.
One second. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And so. We have one. Letter of interest and she actually withdrew today. What we can have. Like to discuss. If you wanna. Well, you just need to come up for the microphone. Cause it's on soon.
You gotta push the button too.
Really? No, it's on.
Oh, it's on. Oh, God, he's got, he's, he's catering to you already. Oh, okay.
Be careful, light out my phone. Well, what do you want to know?
Well.
Keith, how many years did you serve in the past?
Twenty.
So you have some experience.
Yeah, I forgot the point. Like something. I would request that I. I'd be allowed to man. Yeah, yeah, seriously, yeah. I got enough phone calls today that I'm here and I would do it.
Thank you.
So anybody got any questions?
I think you definitely have the experience.
Well, I'm gonna just leave it to you guys. As Janet told me, if I agreed to this, I wouldn't have since.
No, he cannot stay tonight.
Okay.
But he's gonna come hard and ready in July.
Okay.
So you got it. And in fact, not to embarrass anybody, I'll leave it. So if you don't vote for me, I totally understand.
Well, I mean, you could, I would say just go ahead and at least do the oath. So you're doing whatever. And if they approve you, we can get the signatures straightened out and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Keith Swenson to fill the mayor vacancy.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Before, just so that the understanding is, if term closes December thirty first, two thousand and twenty two, they filled you in on that?
It's a year and a half.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
That's one.
It's not only, it's, 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 it's one more, it's not only this calendar year, it's one more, one more calendar year.
So all in favor of Keith, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then.
Congratulations, Mayor Swenson.
Well, that's okay.
Yeah, you gotta read your oath.
I'll take a photo op for the paper.
The paper's in the court.
I know, but I don't think she'll go to camera.
Hey, louder.
I, Keith Swenson. Do solemnly swear to support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Minnesota, and to faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Henderson, Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge, judgment, and ability. So help me God. Thank you for your question.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Yep, okay, that's good. We're gonna just go out of order so we can. We're just gonna work out of order so we can, you know, get to seven o'clock here, so. Go ahead. Well, you all probably know my name. Should've known my name first, but I'm idiot and I sent it to apparently. They email us. So when I give it to you, it took a while for me to realize that actually he never got it, which was still supposed to be the summary of the law. So my apologies. It's time for me to retire, obviously, and I'm done short. So that said, I really appreciate all the years that I got to serve you. It was a privilege. And I do have some recommendations as far as replacements go. I know that Lon and I have personally talked about options. I know that Jason Moran has already indicated an interest in representing the city, both criminal and civil. And the other alternative would probably be for the county attorney's office to take over the criminal. And then the city would have to locate an attorney that does the municipal civil stuff. I have a personal preference and I'm gonna let you know what it is. Obviously, you all get involved, so I'm, I'm just, I want you to know because I think it could be helpful. Jason Moran is an accomplished city attorney. He's been in practice for twenty years. He represents a number of cities. I certainly have known him with professional capacity of work, the full twenty years that he's practiced law over in the center. I think he'd be a really good fit for this city. He understands small city problems. He's represented, you know, five different cities at this point. And over the course of the years that he's practiced, those five cities have sure have given him the same kind of opportunities to address the problems that a city attorney would have in Henderson. So it, it, it keeps one attorney doing both sides, and I think that's kind of nice. I, I don't know from a financial standpoint, how the city would come out if you have to end up hiring probably a larger city law firm, probably a veteran who does just the civil law. But you have all seen, I think, Jason's proposal. He's, you know, he's proposing a hundred dollars an hour for all of his work, which is, I think, really good. And given his level of competency, I think he'd be a good fit. And I, I know I have full faith in the county attorney's office too for doing the criminal stuff. It's just that then you're bifurcating the representation. And I just, I think it's better for a small city to have one attorney representing them than all, in all ways.
You know, I would just reemphasize what Allison said. I have worked with Jason over in Lister County for the last twenty years also. And he is just, in my head, just an outstanding attorney who would be an awesome fit for us. Because really, all he deals with is small communities like us.
And the only thing I would say, you know, because of the timing, the way this worked out, you guys can do whatever you want. We, you know, we, we didn't, you didn't really take, you didn't take any action because there was nothing before you. And, you know, nothing, nothing you guys could do about it. But the procedure should be whatever you're gonna do. Cause Allison had some specific, you know, some dates in there in mind. You should, you should take action one way or the other to finalize those dates. We didn't, you didn't actually ask for a proposal, but we did get to, you know, so you can decide that's enough, or you can go out and look for more. Or, you know, do whatever you want, you know. Sounds like Allison would be ready to move on whenever she wants. Or whenever, you know, whenever, whenever you say, whether it's tomorrow or a couple of months from now, and it sounds like both of them be ready to start, not two months from now? No.
Tomorrow would be good.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good. This is assuming better.
Yesterday. Yesterday would've been better. Yesterday would've been better.
Hey, you know, whatever. I'm ready for, you know, last word.
Well, I, I really am convinced that Jason Moran would be wonderful for us. And it's my understanding, Allison, that we really don't have to go out for proposals. Is that correct?
You don't have to what?
Go out for proposals.
This is, this is a professional or person that you're hiring. You don't have to go and get proposals. You can hire whoever you want. The one thing I want to caution you about is that Jason works for a law firm. And Jason said in his proposal, well, I'm going to be, I'll be the lead person. But it just, I think, whatever you do with him, make sure that he understands that he is going to be the attorney for the city. Or a number of other people who work there who frankly, I might have such confidence in. So I would like to see Jason Moran be the city attorney.
I think that's the way the proposal read, is that?
Get read like that.
I know, but he does work for a law firm, so I wouldn't be surprised if it's going to be the Christian, whatever it is, Christian Kior, whatever it is, who needs a law firm. Jason Moran taking the lead. But I would like to see just his thing on. I don't know that that's possible since he does work for a law.
I'd make a motion that we hire Jason.
First, uh, first.
Accept.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept Allison Jones's resignation as city attorney and thank her for her service to the city of Henderson.
Now, with the effective tomorrow?
Effective July one, okay?
June thirtieth.
No, you know what? July, July one, really, if they have Jason or anyone to nominate, they've gotta be on board because I gotta transfer all these files. And there's a, there's a huge number of Henderson files I have to get, I have to go through them all. So July one, I, I can do it, yeah. I can do it by July one. I wish I could do it sooner.
Are June thirtieth?
Huh?
June thirtieth with, June thirtieth.
Okay, fine. If you, if you are going to nominate and now, by motion, decide that Jason could be the person, then he has to do it.
I will second that, and I will also personally thank you for your many years of service to the city of Henderson.
So we have a motion and a second, and I too do appreciate you, Allison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, June thirtieth. Alright, so can I leave?
You better see who we, who we appoint. I'll make a motion that we hire Jason Moran as the Henderson city attorney as per his proposal for fees.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, sir.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So he will be Lon contacted?
Yep.
Thank you, Allison.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Don't leave your shoes in there running out.
Lon, would you like to give your report?
Dimitri, I think you must be here. You wanna check and see if he's here? Yep.
He was peeking in.
It might be done by some.
Who wait for that?
We can have Dimitri's report though, Lon.
Yeah.
All right, Dimitri, we'll be ready for your report.
During the period of time from May eighteenth to June fifteenth, we handled ninety seven calls for service. The department made arrests for felony second degree assault, to counts of domestic assault in Minnesota. We enforcing nuisances throughout the city. Second notices were issued to people, to those who didn't show any improvements. The breakdown of courses as such, one domestic call, one assault, one threat, one noise complaint, one suspicious activity, a traffic stops, one animal complaint forces other agency, one civil matter, one alarm, one missing suicidal, fifty six community police and direct patrol, five assists, public assist work, check, seven ordinance violations, and the rest of it as miscellaneous calls such as traffic hazard information only found property. During that period of time, dispatched, called me out, or I had to come out or really hold calls for service four times, six hundred saving to the city. Personnel, I just spoke today with Sean DeGhene. He's gonna be turning in his resignation. He is currently chief of Gibbon and just has too much on display. I would like to thank him. He, he's been here for a long time, but unfortunately for us, he is no longer be able to work. The department's gonna be conducting use of force training at the end of the month. Everyone's up to date. Main unit has twenty seven thousand three hundred eighty four miles on it. And the backup unit's got eighty one thousand and fifty five miles on it. Everything else is working. We're getting new tires for the main squad, cause the ones that currently on it are really involved. So I'm not sure exactly what it's gonna cost us because at this point, but I will let you know next time around. I know Dan told me he got the tires, but you know, it's gonna be labor involved. I don't know how much he's been in charge at this point.
Dimitri, can he get those on state bid?
Yeah, on state bid.
Okay.
Now, you got all the information.
Yeah. Yeah, that was one of the stipulations. If he couldn't, we would have to utilize somebody else, but since he's in town and he does all the work for.
He's got the last couple of steps on state bid, so he knows how to go through.
Okay.
Yes. We all current on post NBC requirements. All our roll-ins went without any major incidents. And right now, we're getting ready and doing logistics with our Sauerkraut media for the Sauerkraut days. Any questions?
I guess not.
Do we have an ordinance on vehicles that are stacked up all over, I mean, certain places? I don't know. I didn't go back and look at it, but.
What do you mean stacked in different places? If it's junk and debris, there is also a violation of their state ordinance if it's a junk vehicle, state, state statutes, I'm sorry. Do you have any particular place we should look at?
Well, I mean.
We, we addressed issues with cer- with certain vehicles, yes.
I'm not saying on top of each other.
Yeah. So we, there are some vehicles that need to be removed. They're obviously dilapidated and falling apart, and nobody's using those issues or addressed. If you have any specific address for me, just get in touch with me after the meeting, and we'll look into it. Whether we, I don't know whether we addressed it or not yet, so but.
Cause like you said.
Yes, just get in touch with me and let me know a particular.
To answer your question, do we have an ordinance? Yes, we do.
So, so yeah, there is reinforcing those.
And down on South Third Street where the house, I think it's under foreclosure, I believe. Is that city property where that tree's laying back there, or is that part of that house?
Jason went over there and, and talked to, I think, he was, if I remember correctly, the neighbor cut that tree or something like that. And he was trying to get in touch whoever owns this, so they can kind of, you know, sort it out.
Which one?
The old tree's house. Down on South Third.
It's the house that used to be that.
Isn't that the tree we just cut down?
Yes, in the back.
The meth house.
No, no, it was in the backyard.
But that same house, but in the back.
Yeah.
Uh, it probably isn't, if it's not in the alley, I mean, it must not be in the alley because I.
Well, I'm just, you know, it's back there where I, I don't know where the property line is.
The alley is the property line.
Where the bonding and everything stuff is, you know. There's a tree standing back there, and then there's, I believe, like junk, it's laying there. I had a picture of it, but it already got sunned.
Yeah, we, we looked into it, and as I said, I'm, I'm not sure what the, you know, but I know that Jason talked to the neighbor, and he was trying to get in touch with the bank, whoever owns it. And wasn't.
I think it's under foreclosure. I think so too.
Yeah, I don't think anybody will.
Well, I mean, if it's in foreclosure, there should be a bank, you know, that some, some sort of, you know, someone who owns it at this point. So I can, I can follow up on that. I'll let you know.
There is a.
It'll be on private property. Cause the only property the city owns back there is the twenty, the twenty foot alley. I mean, the, the property to the east is even, is owned by McDonald's.
Even right up to the diner.
On, the city doesn't own much of the, if, if, if the levee is not on a street or an alley, the city doesn't own it. City doesn't own it. I mean, it's a, we got easement on everything. It's like Mendocas got easement on roads. If it, if it was a prior platted city street or alley, the city owns it because it's on the eighteen fifty two platform, but.
Yeah, so I didn't know all that was back there.
Yeah, there's no, I shouldn't say there's no, we probably acquired two properties on tax title, but, you know, that are in that area. But seventy percent of what's down there is privately owned.
All right, thank you.
Uh, you wanna, you wanna take her right away for what I just handed out?
Mrs., yeah. Beth, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Come on up?
I'm here representing the Lions Club. In charge of the concession stand now. We're definitely behind the eight ball. We hope to serve beer at Sauerkraut Days in the concession stand as we've done for years and years and years. The difference this year is there's no longer free two beer available, so it would be stronger. I have already notified our insurance company. They're all ready to rock and roll on all the coverage we could possibly need. We're just trying to finalize a couple of things with the state because since the Sauerkraut Days committee already has all of their liquor license, and we're actually gonna be sharing a rental refrigerator trailer with them. We're trying to find out if we can operate under their license and just add separate locations, since we're all within the confines of Bender Park. But I wanted to be sure that we did this just in case we do need it, so that, you know, we're not running around like chickens with our heads cut off tomorrow. Does that make sense?
I would, yeah, I, I would almost think you could get an off, they could get an off site for theirs for.
They're just trying to get a ruling on somebody from the state alcohol and gaming commission. And of course, I was out of town until this morning, so. We just don't have a ruling from them yet. It's, we think it could, but we don't wanna take a chance of messing up the Lions gambling license, and we don't wanna mess up anything. The Sauerkraut committee.
The Sauerkraut, I think you're on that, right? But, I mean, they got a very extensive liability coverage, which, which covered liquor and covered everything. So whether the, whether the Lions selling strong beer can actually be under that, I don't, I, I don't think any.
Have a copy of our insurance with me, cause I was just talking with the police department to get everything lined up. And I don't know if it was, if our insurance would cover yours.
Well, my understanding is if we don't have our own liquor license, we can't even get our own insurance.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, you know, if, if there's like a rider or something could be added to your insurance, there's no problem with that. It's just a matter of trying to get rulings in place so that we can figure out who's doing what to who.
So it's, so at this point, if they can't add you, your only other option is to
Do our own.
Do a second license with them getting the insurance, and we better decide by tomorrow because
Yes.
Because whenever we did the last one, I mean, the state said we need three weeks, and I still haven't got that one back yet, you know, so we might be able to put a rush order on them and tell them we messed, you know, something's messed up here, but we have to move pretty quick, so you got a license in place.
But unfortunately, I didn't get an answer before business class today, so hopefully we'll know tomorrow for sure. And I'm all ready to push the button and get all of our insurance and everything if necessary, but I just wanted to see if I could get this approved in case we need it.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the Lions Club to have strong beer during Sauerkraut Days.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
We all have to fill out here, or?
No, this is mine.
Thank you so much.
Uh, you should add to that, we didn't, you didn't charge a fee to Sauerkraut last time, but the motion should say, I'm assuming you're gonna say same thing, no fee?
Yeah, I wanna add my motion to say that.
Well, we're willing to pay whatever just if it's necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Lon.
Do you wanna do your report, Lon?
I think I'm getting down to where it's the only thing left. You might get out of here as soon as Chris gets here. And I'm still looking, starting at the top here. The levee stuff, we don't have our two thousand and one inspection schedule yet. As far as I know, at least Bruce didn't say anything. We still got about, got about eighty thousand outstanding that needed to come in yet from FEMA. And now that hopefully is when the state's getting, well, I shouldn't say that. I mean, they should be getting staffed now, but I guess if they shut down at some point because of some political issues, I guess we probably will still have to wait to collect the rest of that. Signs and repairs and things like that. I haven't, we do have some additional signs down there. I haven't talked to you about this at all, Beth. Did you, did you wanna do, you think you wanna do any kind of dedication on those street signs at some point?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, do that before Sauerkraut Days or not? Or during it, or? Okay, we might, we might do that here at some point too in the next couple of weeks. I think there's, there's about. Okay, we might, we might do that here at some point too, in the next couple of weeks, I think, there's, there's about ten of them that Bruce has gotta put up yet, and then we should be done with those.
Chris, yeah, I have another question, is that how we map this American mountain? I'm assuming we're gonna want them towards the top of the fence.
Somewhere, yeah, somewhere on those streets, and uh, what we, yeah, I, no, I don't, I, I did not, you didn't, did you announce, yeah, you announced this already at Lions Club?
Yeah, they already.
Yeah, what we ended up, what we ended up, what, when the Lions donated those uh, signs, uh, Glenn Lay had pushed for that project in the Lions Club for as long as I've been in it, and uh, and Ron has been down there, so bas- basically when we bought some extras, we bought some extra signs, and one says like Walter's Way and Glenn, Glenn Lay Parkway and stuff like that, so we'll do a dedication with uh, you know, with, with all, with all that and doing whatever. And, and now that you got uh, Keith appointed mayor, you'll, you'll, you'll have a job, I, I mean uh, uh, so that'll be coming up. Crack ceiling, Benny went around today, or Pat, Patching or whatever, and, and he was gonna have a quote for tonight's meeting, maybe he's coming at seven o'clock. I have not seen him yet, we had about uh, six or eight places that he was checking on, and I told him I would like it for tonight's meeting, I guess he maybe didn't pick up, I didn't tell him we were gonna meet at six o'clock. Temple stuff, Bruce has been working on it, uh, I can text you, uh, there's some signs that he's putting up there, he's got Evolution working on those, or they must be getting, you're probably getting pretty close to, it goes down already. So, basically it'll have some rules and some information, and what's acceptable and not accept, acceptable and whatever, all, all, all up there. Um, store removal, we decide later, Allison's Park. Uh, I'll do this while I'm talking about it anyway, we had this as part of Park Board. I got mine. When it gets to the point where, I haven't, Mendat has not reached out to me lately on where we're at with uh, with our flood mitigation agreement, but when it gets to that point, um, Terry Bohoby put together a plan here and presented it to the Park Board as to a potential project, as to uh, what we could try to use, enhance some of those funds and go up Ridge Road a ways, and then maybe turn it into uh, even more enhancements in Allison's Park and things like that, so uh, so that'll, we got another Park Board meeting in a month, in a month, and hopefully things will be getting a little more clearer as to where, where that's going, but that's a project that the Park Board will, will be working on. Um, along, along with that, on where you see that loop and stuff, okay, we got the seventeen camp sites, they're full most of the time, or, and I shouldn't say full, but we've got people up there most of the time. Electric with the hot weather is an issue, uh, people, people blow out, uh, we've got a, we've got a fifty amps, some thirty amps, some twenty amps, and it, it gets to be pretty hairy, and we've been talking for about four or five years as to how we're gonna enhance that area. You know, right now we've got seventeen sites, this proposal would change some of that or add some more, which would be part of some kind of grant we would apply for, but while we're doing that, uh, Mike Spellman has been our go-to guy up there, and what he says is, well, I got this pulled up here, when you, when you go in the back by the building, kind of where the fire loop is, what we, what we should have is a transformer back there, which would then allow us to do like fifty amps to all of the sites, because, and that's what, that quote he gave us some years ago for fifty or sixty thousand, and he said, you would, you would, if you talk Excel into doing a transformer back there, you would, you would knock that price down more than half, because then basically you'd have, they wouldn't have, right now he'd have to run from someplace, who knows where, he would just be, he would just have to run it at X amount of feet, you know, and then we would just, if that would work, then we would just run that um, to somewhere else back in there to get additional sites, you know, and whatever, so, so all of that might actually come together uh, for.
I got Chase, I don't know where you're.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Chase.
So I, I figured out the, the quantity and the amounts on, on that patchy. Um, I went off of the numbers that we used, uh, two, was it two years ago, three years ago, when we did all that patching in town. Um, Bruce gave me a list of spots. Uh, I, I believe it was twelve different spots around town. Um, using the numbers that we did uh, two, three years ago, it'd be somewhere around seventy-five thousand. Um, I don't believe, I went and looked at all the spots on uh, Monday, I believe it was, I don't think, there's probably six of them that, that don't need to be completely dug out um, and filled back in, I think we're gonna just take the blacktop off and uh, just patch in with some, with some blacktop, we don't have to do any subgrade work. Um, so I guess if uh, that's just a ballpark number, seventy-five thousand for twelve spots, uh, I mean, if you guys wanna, wanna take a look at uh, take a look at the spots, then we can get a, a little closer number on things.
I would like to at least see what's going on before we make any kind of decisions on that. Can you hear me, Chase?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Are you still planning on starting the library on Monday?
I didn't catch that.
Are you still planning on starting the library on Monday?
Do you plan on doing the library on Monday?
What are they saying, Steve?
Are you planning on doing the library on Monday?
Yes, Monday, Tuesday.
So.
I mean, that's, that's just using, using the numbers that we had, uh, you know, two years ago or whatever, two or three years ago when we did the patching in town. Now, granted, them are, I mean, we subcutted them, um, I believe it was like sixteen inches down. Uh, took the dirt out, filled it all back in with gravel, and then put blacktop on top. Like I said, I mean, six of them spots out of the twelve spots, I don't think we need to do that. Um, and I mean, that's definitely gonna, gonna save you a lot of money if you don't have to take out the subgrade and fill it back in. But I mean, that's just, I, I got the list, I can, I can, I remind you.
I, I just, I just, I just sent the list to everybody that Bruce put together?
Take a look at it and measure things out, and get a closer idea on how much, how much Bruce you wanna do.
Thank you. Just thank.
What?
I would say just thank him.
Yeah, we've, we've got the information, and then they'll discuss what kind of timeline they wanna deal, deal with. And we, we got an estimate to start, so that's fine.
Now, we can look at it, don't you?
No, just give me a call, we can meet up, we can look at it whenever.
Sounds good, thank you.
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of looking at this list, Lon, and I, I mean, I just have a question. That South Fifth Street across from Duane Tiggs, isn't that been Mendat's?
No, that was um, that was a locate.
Yeah, but they, didn't they hit the thing when they were?
It was our fault. The locate wasn't.
Correct?
Correct.
Oh.
So, yes, normally it would be. Some of we, some of we gotta do.
And I really think we should look into um, Mill Hill. Mill Street Hill. The lower portion, that is. Uh, the whole street is in need of something, and it is the bus route. I mean, everybody, it, it gets used a lot more than people think, it's, it's a busy street, you know?
Yeah, I'd say the fire hall patch was that water, was that water leak, so we gotta do that, the South Fifth one. We have to do that. Uh.
Who was the alley behind post office, I mean, is that?
The city.
I think that should get from the mailboxes at least to six, should get done with that at some point.
There's some really big potholes there.
But, but, I mean, the ones that don't have any blacktop at all, we gotta do something with. And again, well, you got, you got the list, uh.
Sorry.
Um, somebody else wanna have just Steve meet with them, or somebody else wanna meet with them, or?
Oh, the post office is on there, Steve.
What's that?
Post office is on there.
Is it included in the seventy-five thousand, or is it only the top eight that are?
No, it's twelve of them, he said.
Okay. Okay, so eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, okay, so these are all twelve plans.
Yeah. Okay, uh. Yeah, Bruce gave this list. Yeah, okay, I'll read, the fire, the fire hall patch, the one across from Tiggs' patch, Locust and North Sixth, which would, and North Seventh, which would be down, you know, down on, down on that block, Walnut and North Seventh, Cedar and North Seventh, so basically those intersections, Mill and South Sixth by, that's where, where we're talking there, Ken was just talking about, Minnesota and Seventh, and then the, and then the Frost Whales, or whatever you wanna call them, up on, up on Maple Ridge, those three, and then the alley behind the post office, and then, yeah, from Fifth to the mailbox. And he said the strip in front of the city shop, I don't know what that one is.
I know number four's been on there for several years, and I can remember going down there and looking at that um, with Kelly when he was on the council, and uh.
Yep, we were, we had that one, and we had, we had those two on when we, when we had that Mendat deal going, not Mendat, when that FEMA thing was going on, and when FEMA came on, looked at it, we couldn't convince them that uh, it was possible. They, they paid for those ones up in Maple Ridge, but they wouldn't pay for those, those ones down there, and it's that those, that, I guess they figured that out, that those, that those have been there for thirty years, and uh, and that the rain event, and uh, didn't, didn't cause them, you know, so.
We should have made it what?
Well, and again, Steve can maybe talk to them, uh, we can talk about it tonight, or you can wait. Uh, we're gonna, over two years, we're gonna be getting ninety-six thousand or so in, in, from um, from whatever they're calling it, it's not COVID money anymore, but a new, a new name, I mean, you can use it for basically anything, so it's a matter of how you wanna prioritize using it, I mean, you can use it for a water, for a water project, for a sewer project, for stat. But ba- basically, it's a, basically it's a block, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a ninety-six thousand dollars, so check that's gonna come into your account, uh, forty-seven or forty-eight thousand this year, and forty-seven or forty-eight thousand next year, you know, so I guess, the, so there is, there is, there is a potential project you can add that's not budgeted, if you, if you so want to do that, and instead of maybe doing seventy-five thousand, if you can cut some stuff off or do whatever, I mean, if you can get it down to forty-five or fifty, you know, and then uh, you'd have a budget neutral for this year, with whatever money was there, and you come up with a project for next year or something, I mean, that's, I'm not saying that's the way you have to do it, but it's, it's an option anyway, if you wanna get some speech going, and.
I think it makes sense, I think there's some repairs that need to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And we just keep pushing them off.
Yeah, and, and we've already scheduled special assessment, well, we got dialogue doing eight streets or whatever, without special assessment, and here if you can do, if you can do four more without special assessment, then you're getting, you're getting closer then, I mean, pretty much, it's somehow you can figure out something about it in Mill Street, and then you pretty much got all of that part of town, the lower level, done. And you got most of it down on that, if you can do three or four of the intersections, you got most of it down on, down on that end, so could work, I guess.
Well, should we cap it at fifty, and, I mean, if you want a second person to go with Steve, I can go with Steve and come up with.
And like you said, some of the areas may not even have to be subgraded. You know, it may just be removal of the blacktop patch, or whatever, and uh, just blacktop alone.
So cap it at fifty, and then come back and discuss the rest of the, and you guys will decide on the order of urgency?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, unless someone else wants to go.
I think the worst spots should be done first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get, probably when you say the worst spots, then it's just a matter of how much you're gonna prioritize uh, Mill Street, I mean, Mill Street can probably take up all of fifty thousand, if that's, unless, unless that one you just wanna pull out and figure you gotta do a different, well, out of that fifty thousand, I'm saying, you figure you gotta do that a different way. But I mean, you can see what you're gonna get for that number, but I, I can't believe you're gonna, I mean, I gotta say most of it's gonna end up being, the other ones are maybe what? Like the patches at the fire hall and down, they're big, there you just uh, you just dig a little bit out, there're probably gonna be two, three, four thousand dollar patches, you know, so.
Mill Street is definitely gonna have to be subgraded, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And walk-in.
Yes.
And it really should have curb and gutter.
Yeah, you're right.
Thinking too, so that one, I feel like could be a more expensive project.
Yeah.
And it needs, I mean, yeah, you got drainage involved.
A lot of water coming out.
It has brand-new drainage from when they did Mill Street and Sixth Street up above.
Churchill.
It should have new intakes, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I didn't even watch it in the last six weeks, but uh, it's been dry, so it's up in change, but but it's hard for babies to keep ahead, I don't know if you know, right, at the end of, at the end of Orange's Corner Lock, there's a, there's a culvert down there, and then they got rip rep in, and the rip rep just keeps going away, and it, and it keeps cutting into uh, the deceivers alley, you know, and it's, it's closer and closer to that alley, you know, so there could, there could be a day when we get a, we get a big rain and it's covered with whatever, it's, there's a lot of vegetation there, I mean, something could wash out in there and somebody goes in that alley, and you would never, you would never know, especially at night, if uh, if that, if that whole corner kind of walked out, you know, so.
So if you guys could look at that with Chase and
That's where Phoenix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I'd say they could.
No, do you wanna motion on that?
Well, I mean, depending on how, it's, it's, it's your rules, and depending on how liberal you wanna get with uh, with, with that bonding money, I mean, you don't have to have W W, well, I, I guess I shouldn't say that, you would have to, I think that was the only way Chris said you could uh, you, you could, you could use those funds, because you'd have to, you'd have to add that, you'd have to add that street as a change order to the existing project. You know, which you wouldn't, you wouldn't walk your bids on it, you'd add it, you'd add it as a change order, you wouldn't have to be, you know, of course they're out of town now, because they'd have to come back and accept a thing, but but you could do that, you could have them draw something up, add it, add it, it wouldn't, add it, W W would be willing to be W W. G M would be willing to add it as a change order, and they wouldn't really do anything, it would just be W W, then you could actually do it and have funds do it, you know, and, and get it done, and if, if that's the route you wanted to take, you know, and, you know.
Just the blacktop, but if you don't take care of the drainage and stuff.
I agree.
So that's why, that would, that would probably be a fifty thousand dollar or so change order on, on that project. But, but then it would, it would be done, it would match in the Sixth Street, and it would match in the Ninth Street, you know. And so, so then, and, and so then the only one down there that wouldn't be done south of uh, Mill Street, would be that next street, that next block over, would be the only one south of there that would not, that would not have been taken care of, or really that street's not bad, and so at some point if you just overlay that, every, every, everything from Mill Street itself on the lower end would be, would be new, and should out, I mean, based on how fast Henderson did blacktop, prepared replacements, I think probably if, if, I think probably even when I'll ask you, I mean, as far as how many people are gonna live. I mean, you're, you're uh, you're the, you guys are the yucks, you guys are the yucks, because you're, I don't, for sure that I'll laugh hard, long, and you're gonna live, that's for a hundred and thirty, you know, so uh, or I'd love to do council comes in a fit, every forty years, if that ever is, you know, so. Cause I ser- I seriously doubt if that section that we're talking about, between ninety-three and Sixth Street, it would never have been done. I mean, uh, my, my guess is that was the same thing, it was some kind of cartwheel path or whatever, and somebody just went along there, uh, they didn't, they never dug that three-dollar ditch. they didn't, they never dumped that three dollar bid anything, I mean, they just, they just threw blacktop and. No, somebody, somebody just had some extra blacktops one day, and they had it at the back of the truck, and Roger Steinbauer or somebody just dumped, three little, three little blacktop on top of some dirt, and somebody leveled out, and that's, I'm sure that's all that was done, I mean, it was a gravel.
It's not buried, but.
Yeah, it was, it was a gravel stream in the thirties, the forties, and whoever, might have been Roger, Roger Steinbauer, might have been Roger Keegs, might have been uh, Charles Greeley, could have been anybody, but uh, but I don't, I don't think it was engineered out, I mean, I just think it was, don't, you know, so.
No, because it's not straight with the world enough.
Didn't we, didn't the city at one time though do something with the drainage that runs down where?
We get, when, when we, when we did, we were able to do where the concrete is on the one side, when, when we got that channel re-done by FEMA, then they allowed us to go up that half, that half a block, so they, so basically, we re- we replaced where the, where the drainage is along there, and then we put that, when we came up Sixth Street, we put that center line in that, that tied into that, so, because that was all, we were able to, when we put that cross, that cross section in, behind, when we changed it from going behind vendors to coming down the alley and then down, and then over on Sixth Street, we were able to extend, extend that all the way up the block, so that was, that was basically FEMA and county money, I felt paid for that.
So should we make a motion to do the repairs and omit Mill Street and talk to Chris about a change order?
I would say that when Chris gets here, if that's what you want to do.
Is he coming tonight?
Yeah.
He's probably, you know, he, just what, three blacktops or pick it out.
Well, if they do it.
Cheaper that way, but, like I said, if you don't do something about the rain.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be uh, yeah, you're gonna do it right if you do it.
You're not gonna do that.
So it's gonna be a hundred?
It's almost nowadays.
But, I.
Well, I guess we should look for a motion to omit Mill Street, cap it at fifty.
For this fiscal, for this year.
And talk to Chris about a bid for.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be a change order negotiated on this existing contract, otherwise, I mean, not, not saying bidding it out is a bad thing, but that's gonna mean then, you're gonna have to draw plans, take bids, do whatever, and you're still gonna have to have an engineered design, so, you're not gonna, I mean, you're not gonna gain much, I mean, while they can, or WW will have the opportunity to stick us a little bit because of, because of that, but the other, but the other end of it is, you're gonna, you're gonna get it, you're gonna get it done, and you're gonna get it paid for, because if, if you, if you take it outside the scope of that, if it is a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna take a hundred thousand dollars out of the, out of the city budget, and then we're, then, I mean, we're not gonna be over budget, I don't think, when the year gets done, but if we, we're not, we're not gonna have a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, then, then we're gonna be a hundred thousand dollars in the red all, all, all year next year, and we're gonna have to levy a hundred thousand dollars extra this year to catch up for, for what, and next year for what we're paying, you know, so.
We don't want to do that.
No, 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 I think we just uh, so, so, so there, when you, when you run everything cost-wise out, to do it the way we're talking about, might end up costing some more money, but it's where our financing is at now to, to, to do it and, you know, and, and get it done, so.
So. So you want a motion, or a motion would be appropriate to cap the road repair at fifty thousand for this year, omit Mill Street out of that group, um, and have Steve and I look at it with Bailey to come up with the top priority for this year? Does that make sense?
Me?
I'll make that a motion.
The motion, and is there a second?
I guess I second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so do you need a motion?
Make a second motion to authorize Chris to negotiate a change order.
Right.
Yep.
Do you need a motion for that as well?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I'll make a motion for you to authorize Chris to look at Mill Street as an add-on.
Change order.
Change order to our project.
And is there a second to any of these motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Steve, Steve, you'll look at that drawing and that they come up with with a fine toothful.
And now do you want to go back to the electricity at Allison's Park?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a proposal, and so, I'm hoping, uh, the lady that I talked to, Tricia Duncan, uh, has got it out on engineering design draw, so, they'll put that together, and then once we, once they see that proposal, I guess, it might give, it might take all year now when I think about it, I mean, we're already in G, you know, it doesn't seem like uh, we're over with a lot, but really, by the time they get something done, it's gonna be August or so, and it's not gonna be, where I think it's just gonna have to live with people, bitch, and that, that things are gonna blow out, and that's just the way, you know, the way it is, and I can take, you know, I, I pretty much can figure, well, I should, maybe, when, we, we messed up a little bit anyway, so I don't feel quite so bad if somebody gets uh, gets um, doesn't, doesn't get exactly the experience they want, uh, typically in the winter, and like after September first, Lindsay's dropped the rates in half at the, at the campground, you know, so, okay, so she, she did that, you know, and of course then left whenever she left, and, and then I just had, had the stripe guys, where our vendors, just turn it back on, you know, and, and all of a sudden I was getting monthly bookings and doing whatever the first, the first uh, two, four weeks, and huh, that's really, so we either really fill it up bad, oh yeah, they were, I started looking, oh shit, they're only paying eighteen dollars for, we were still on, so, so these ones that booked early and filled the stuff up, they were basically getting it, that, at half, at half price until when it, the, it changed rates, so, I mean, the one, the one guy, the one, the one guy got, the one, the one guy lady got pretty mad because they kept doing, doing whatever, and uh, it's another side, sideline here, you know, I've, I've been using this phone, everything's been rolling over to here, and I haven't, I didn't think I missed any messages, or, you know, or, or did whatever with it, uh, and then Janet texted me one day, and she, you know, she said she tried to call, and my voicemail was, was full, and huh, I don't know if I could miss that, and so, I, I go, I go on there and, and do my, and check my voicemail, and it was the same couple, first he, first he called three times, and she called five times, and he called, so, so that, that one day I had, it runs out, it goes up to twenty, you know, so, it was all, it was all that, it was one, it was nineteen of them and one more, and uh, so, but, you know, whatever, they, they eventually found their site and they figured it out, and, you know, and they didn't ask for rebate, but because they stayed, but uh, but, you know, but in the end, I didn't feel like would necessary to rebate them because they got in at half price, so. Community building, we may have somebody that's able to do the uh, the side, the side of the building, we've got Bruce, Bruce has got a person that's on commu- community service that has folks kind of working capabilities, so we might be able to work that into a plan and get the part of this building done, boat manning, Bruce has been doing that, uh, equipment or water stuff, the last meeting, um, Chad was from McGuire Iron was here, I've got that proposal in here, if this is something you want to move forward with, he said he would roll in all the pain this year into that, and just start it right away this year, and go through two thousand and twenty-four, with longer.
I, I really thought that was a good deal.
It seems like you, you tell, I mean, it's, you sure, you sure talk good.
Thought it was a good way to keep on top of things rather than having to build up.
It's, I mean, basically, you know, Chad's not gonna be here when this contract expires, but I mean, his sales might do, but that water color is gonna look new all the time, I mean, it's always, however it looks now, that's how it's gonna look next year, how it's gonna look uh, ten years from now, or one year from now, or whatever it's gonna be, that's, that's good.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second to approve the McGuire Iron plan?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And, yeah, Chase just said he's fine, vendor park is open, um, I mentioned the ninety-six thousand dollars or so, uh, now when I look at it, we don't have to pass a resolution, but I think you should, I got information in here, you should acknowledge that uh, that, that the information is there, and we're, and you should, you should authorize me to go ahead and uh, fill out the application to claim this, it did show up online last Friday, so I, I can go in and start, start the claim process uh, as soon as I get an ID and doing whatever, so, I don't have all the details yet, but basically it's gonna look like whatever is in this packet, so you should authorize me to go ahead and do that.
So we'll be looking for a motion to authorize Lon to go ahead and finish the permit first.
Oh, gee, double sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I don't think all the rules are out yet, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to set a budget or do something with it, I mean, the eligibility criteria is a lot broader than what we want with one is, one was before, but I, you know, and I, I don't think we're gonna deal, you know, I don't think we'll deal with anything with finance or uh, staffing or anything like that, and be more, some kind of capital outlay projects, and like you say, sounds like we're ready committing to one this year, and uh, in fact, all the, the two things that we just did now are both eligible, that water thing was eligible, that street thing is eligible, I mean, you know, at one point we talked, we've been talking to SEH about uh, you know, after they do their, they bring their test tank or whatever all out, um, that we're, that we could, you know, we could do a filtration system, you know, all of those kind of things, and this, they, none of those were eligible last time, these are all eligible this year, this time, so that, that's why I'm basically saying it's a block plan, because you're just gonna get the money, and it's, it's gonna go into a project somewhere, and in fact, that's how life does. None of you, well, maybe you're Andy recognized term, but there used to be a program, there was a federal AIDS program, all the way up until uh, up, up until nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five, so basically the federal government, like gave Henderson twelve thousand dollars a year, and we just, and you had earmarked as to what it was for, and that this actually kind of is very similar to that, uh, Lane texted me here a few hours ago, he's still not done with um, with, with doing all the journal entries or whatever, I do have some notes on the end of the, end of month, uh, I, I don't know what the bank balance is on or whatever, but they're still between, I don't know how he's got, I don't know how he's gonna do some of the end of the year uh, journal entries, so, we're still between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars difference as to how he's gonna set up those alloc- allocations, and it's not, and it's in the end, but I don't have, I don't have about forty-five or fifty thousand accounted for in our fund accounting system based on what's in the bank, so somehow uh, he's gonna have, somehow there's something in the journal entries that, that he's putting together, that I haven't seen or figured out yet, uh, community square, the only reason I really got this one on here is um, Sibley County is gonna be here on the fifteenth of July, so which is before our next meeting, and they're gonna make a presentation on what's going on with Sibley County, six, I haven't heard anything now for a month on ninety-three or longer, so I don't really know what's happening. Checklists, I got a list now on the back here, it's the one we should start meeting, when I would hopefully can meet next week, so. I think I'm, I think I'm done. I know I'm, oh no, I'm not, not at all, it's obvious. Uh, we passed, and I got, I got two of these in. We, we passed that right-of-way order last night, and now we don't have, we don't have fees, and so, uh, MediaCom is asking for a permit, and I put them both off, MediaCom is asking for a permit to put some new extensions and lines in, Frontier is also asked, and of course, we got the right-of-way thing, the MetroNet, which when they came through, it was about three or four months ago, they, they want, they want to do some stuff, so now, what we did in that last ordinance, and we did that right-of-way thing, is we established the mechanism to do fees and to actually give permit, you know, so, the, the permits are, you know, look at number one, this isn't, this isn't my number, this was, this was out of that example that uh, that I sent out whenever the heck we had those back in January, so, they were, they're suggesting a forty dollars, this general registration and whatever kind of fee, and then um, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for excavation kind of fees, an emergency hole, fifty-five dollars, trinting, there's a bunch of different things here, up to two hundred and seventy-five, uh, now an obstruction permit, but, but that basically is, those are the permits that we need to give out, obstruction needs under this format, anytime like you close the street or an alley or whatever, and a, a nonprofit or a private vendor or somebody creates an obstruction that doesn't let you go through a street or sidewalk, that's, that's what would authorize a charge for that, if and so you wanted to, and then they've got an extension permit fee, and a delay fee and whatever, so, if you want to go with any of these, uh, you should approve that fee schedule now, or else I'll, or else I would just, would now, me, I, I, both MediaCom and Jaguar, who, who wait until tomorrow, and I'll tell them if it's gonna be a fee or whatever, but, they both followed the application process, now it's just a matter of whether we're gonna charge. Jag, MetroNet, MetroNet is switching over their franchise agreement from, MetroNet is switching the franchise agreement over from Jaguar to Metro, they were the ones that were here like January, and then that, they will be the ones that will definitely play in the fiber.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the fee schedule. And I think we should charge the fee, I don't think they should be waived. Because they're gonna pass it on to the customer anyways.
Well, I'm the one, I didn't really have a fee schedule, but when somebody submits me a lot of plans that I've gotta look at, I tell them seven hundred, I know Jamie's gotta look at it and do whatever, I say five hundred and seven fifty or a thousand, and I've never had anybody say, we're gonna not do the project because uh, because of fees or whatever, I, you know, other than small towns, I think for the most part, these larger utilities, if they're, if they're gonna go to a metro or a larger community, they're gonna expect, I think they expect to pay something to me.
We'll be looking for a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
To accept the fee schedule, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, no, I'm not for that.
Seated your time. So I'm just gonna do this quick, are there any requests to appear before the council? And then Chris, we're ready for you.
Is everyone here, so, yeah, we have our base department today, uh, this, this is clear group, mostly the top priority, uh, city renovation, blacktop, right, major blacktop. Incorporated by the state of Tannenbaum, do this elevation, great amount of this elevation, three hundred and seven thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven, okay, three one, three three seven. Great amount of this application, three hundred and seven thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven, okay, three one, three three seven, fifty-seven cents. The one thing I do recommend here, for one, approved that March was paid twice for the contractor, so we had a pay location number five, change order, but we also heard the change order, opposite of that, so I actually didn't pay for it, that same change order twice, so we recommended that agent be subtracted. The three hundred and one thousand dollars that I mentioned here, change, does not require.
Oh, you didn't take it off, I thought you did.
Did not take it off.
Okay. Then they would've got paid it, paid for it again.
So they need to, yeah, so they need to subtract it off, from our, from our, when it's paid location, it's not part of our payment, it's not part of our.
So you know what that number is?
Um, I don't. So I have all this in the back.
Here on the page, it says there's a change order number one, forty-eight thousand five eighty-two thirty.
What page, Amy?
It's on the page where the three hundred and one thousand is.
On the last page?
Oh.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's how it got messed up, we paid one of those, and then, and then they submitted another one, and because the number was different, it got paid.
Yeah.
That's, yes, so then when Diane was looking at whatever was there, she had two different numbers, and then just saw that, well, there must have been another one.
Okay.
So it's a, this, this, this check should be about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, I don't have the exact. All right.
So does this include all of the concrete gutter?
Yeah, and I didn't know that we were, or something, or something, right?
Right now, I've got, unless, unless, I've got no S E H bill on it, and I haven't discussed anything with, with Chris, and so that's something between now and next meeting, we're gonna have, or tonight, you can do it, I don't have some, I don't really have any numbers, unless Chris has got something he's prepared to throw out there. But that's, that's something I think you have, you're gonna have to deal with, with him on as to how much, how much you're gonna authorize them to be paid or reduced from whatever they're submitting.
Well, I guess I'm a, I'm just concerned about when G M went in, or whoever went in with the grader and graded, and all the places that they hit the new curb and took chunks of the concrete out.
Yeah, it, it, it's pretty common to get chips in the concrete.
Not really, because I've been in this business for years, and I've never seen anything so pathetic in my life. I went down to Prior Lake, they got all new curb and gutter, the lines are straight, there's no chips in the top face of the curb or nothing. I understood he might have had a new grader, that he didn't quite know how to run, he's the owner of the company, but if he doesn't know how to run it, I may find somebody that does. And I will not sign off on the bills on this and tell someone that's adjusted on that price, and I'm even probably gonna bring somebody in to give me an assessment on the cost of the damage caused by the contractor himself.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard to, this is an explosive, it hasn't, hasn't happened.
It's all over the place.
So there are areas that we want to replace, if you have if you have a in a contract, you have to take out that one. And so it's the fact that, it's the initial work, or it's the damage, yes, so I recognize that, so, I mean, it's a, it's a project, so usually it's not a lot to be done here.
I mean, it's fine, it's, it's straight up and down, but you can see where it's blatantly hit, and you got pieces like that on top of flat part of the curb, you know, it's brand new concrete, it shouldn't be wrecked before the job is done.
So Chris, I get that you're not here every day, but that onsite inspector, why is he not catching this stuff?
Yeah, and we did try to talk, but I did a lot, once, we got a little less serious, project here, but I, I thought it was, there's something like that, and, and it was, so, that, that's my expectation, catching, catching, so. I mean, we planned to do a walkthrough, that was my, my lunch list here, to do the lunch list for the project, and that would, it's not three, four pieces at that time, so I talked to, down the bulk of that. So I, I am planning to walk all projects, curb, curb, and we lost something like a foot, that that I should do have, that's part of our lunch list, not enough in the final lunch list, find out, we will mark out these curb sections, these areas, that's more optional to put in, either it's below, or if you're out, it's happening, we have to prepare it, so we did have to do, I have a CD, just to make sure. Cover, see your current conditions, and we do have a disaster, so, it's part of our final process, we do those stuff, and, probably will step in, and, maybe, maybe it's something less than, plus a deal, it's certain thing here, where you have steering, rocks, first, you can, drivers, take care of the small things. And I was trying to, I'm, and I, and they on Third Street, again, they, Blacktop on the side. But they use this personal driveway for a platform, drive on, which is kind of creepy, so it was very upset. They should have used their own driveway, they shouldn't be on personal track, they shouldn't be now. I don't want to do that. I might not have any experience here, if you're hanging on, well, but I, you know, got experience, but that's, that's, I just don't see that sense. Back here.
Was that two oh eight, or two? Two twelve, what, what was the number down there with the concrete driveway?
He works for Hanchers, that's all.
Yeah, it's two twelve, I believe. And then, did you have?
John, I can't remember now, it's all.
Do I say it, or?
Probably not.
So did you have any other specifics of like the chunks of concrete that helped Chris out?
Well, I mean, I can take you down, but.
Well, are you gonna, have you got a day in mind, and you can do that lunch list?
Friday morning.
I can't sure if I was taking them on Friday mornings, so Monday does not work for me, but Friday works well. Well, for me, it does, you're. I was on the way. Yeah, I, I'm four eight, so, and that, you got your five in there. So six in the morning, five thirty one.
On Friday, you're available at that time? What time, five thirty or six? Thanks, Steve.
And when is the second level of pavement getting put on?
Uh, we just tend to discuss that, so, normally, rather, normally, rather, so, come here, come to the street next year, first layer, five half, we found the wall, long period, the last was Blacktop, we saw the city streets, uh, but since the, and then, uh, well, was like the Blacktop could probably become, most of each other, the only area, third street, I decided that way, so let's sit a little bit, see if the pavement settles, I feel pretty confident about those streets, not settling too much, but, I mean, we did a soft spot that came out, and, fighting ground, which is, we were located, but that's good, see, maybe happens.
That trench should've never got dug, it rained.
Yeah, it's, it's actually better than our side, our side, when we're stopped.
If they would've backfilled, with different material, I would have. You know, we're gonna get any of the pack, if we put the slot back in the trench.
And then will your walkthrough, Chris, also look at boulevards?
Yeah. That's a big part of the boulevards, okay.
And again, you know, I, I get that you're not here, but when, you know, the gravel in some spots on the boulevard, I don't know how any inspector thought grass was gonna grow in gravel and rock.
And I.
And the unfortunate part is, the council here is taking the heat from the citizens.
I thought in the last month that you said the boulevards would be watered by the company, where they, the property owners received an email? Or a letter stating they should water their own?
What we said out there is that they're responsible for drinking water, for sixty days, that's the main window. We do request owners to water, but they don't have, more than one owner, just willing to put into their grass, probably that is all they'll have, every sixty days, it's time to water.
I don't know that there's been watering, I mean, according to some.
I've seen it once.
Yeah, they have a day turn, it's too much, for me, it's, it's, for me, we're obviously very hot, well, it's, you know, really, that's fresh in the summer, so, you know, this is not the ideal type of grass, the contract is about two months ahead of sort of, I put that, our contractor went digging streets up, but then in August, so we didn't know where we're receiving, April, May, and September, so because they are headed now, the seed is heading, at the heat, the hot weather, that's one of our special, we had a last construction, we, which is continued watering, hopefully things go well, you do pay for water, so the, they're trying to pump water now, and so you might keep doing that, hope the best, or you come back, you spray the seeds, and it's all, and hopefully we get some other nature help to help the water, too, so a little cooler water, so that's something we can discuss, too, but as of right now, the contractor is, that, he put that water, this, for two months, basically, this point. So it's, there's a, it's a, a water.
That's what I thought you had said, but they had not seen, no one.
They don't, they build up three, twice a week, so we have a three day station, that's what's, that's watering, or raining, so if you're raining, I would expect the same, so, ground, so this water, Monday.
Yes.
On there somewhere.
I did see him watering Monday.
Yeah, they don't know, I've had projects going through any water, and it's getting rain.
Sure.
More than this in the last month, it's kind of like a
Dry everywhere.
On the first day, there was four to thirteen bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess we would be looking for a motion to approve this pay application to the contractor minus the forty-eight, five eighty-two thirty. Okay.
Forty-eight, five forty.
Forty-eight, five forty eighteen. So I'll amend that motion, it would be minus the forty-eight, five forty eighteen.
So I just have one question, are they bringing in their own water, or are they connecting to a hydrant, like they did Monday? And if they're
It must be connected to, I, then I don't, I don't know, nobody said anything to me.
So we're paying them to water using our water?
Nobody said anything to me about my water.
And I know that they're connecting to the hydrant at the firehouse.
Yeah, tell them they can't, they shouldn't be doing that, unless Bruce said, unless somebody said something to Bruce, Bruce shouldn't say anything.
That would be thirty-two, sixty-two, fifty, water for the turf was forty-five, fifteen. Fifty, seven, seven, seven.
Yeah, we had water, we had this, one of the turf establishments, two hundred dollars per, for a thousand tanks.
But right now, they're saying we didn't, under this pay estimate, we didn't do anything.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, it's what I'm saying, but it's what I'm saying, if, and, water, this is, one, it's incredible, I see less.
So do we subtract watering from this amount as well, and then also if there's?
Build it for water.
Oh. Oh, yeah, okay.
Which again, they're, they're connecting to our, they're using our water.
In my opinion, though, if it stays dry, that grass seed will lay dormant. It'd be probably more feasible, the water, when it does start raining, or, and then keep it wet after that, I mean, we're gonna be, with this heat and stuff, I mean, that water is gone right now. The problem is with the seed, once it starts going, if you don't keep after it after that, it's dead. Right, so it's got some competition, which helps.
Well, I know they connect it to that hydrant in spring also. So that forty-five, fifteen, I question.
Well, it would be seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, because down below, they would have also done it for the, the water of the turf establishment. There are two in a row there, thirty-two, sixty-two, and then the forty-five, fifteen.
Oh, thirty-two, sixty-two, something else, Janet.
Yeah, that's for
That's a street sweeper.
Yeah, oh, for the dust control, oh, I'm sorry.
So it's just the forty-five, fifteen for dust control water? Well, I don't have a problem paying them if they bring in their own water, but if they're hooking to our hydrant, like they did, they should be paying for it.
Do you think we could negotiate the, the, the bit amount per gallon?
I mean, with all the questions, you know, they might pitch some, but I don't know if, I, I didn't, didn't you say you didn't wanna give them a nickel until you figure some of this stuff out, I mean, hold it for a month.
Well, that was my plan.
That's my plan, too.
So, uh, maybe that's more, right now, almost fifty thousand dollars, so maybe, so, if you're not satisfied with more, maybe, that's just something fifty thousand dollars, maybe, another question. So I, I, I would encourage you to, to, if you wanted to modify, if that, right, that three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that works on my subcontractors, will be different.
And I, I agree with you, because, uh, coming from a construction family, the work is done. It, even if it's not done up to grade, they, it, that is a problem, that would be because the withholding, a, a lot of the work, withholding all of it, a lot of it.
Well, I don't agree with holding it all, or holding it back on all of it either.
But, okay, if you're saying that three oh one is supposed to go down to around two fifty-two, what if you approve a check for two hundred thousand dollars?
I'd be, but.
You're gonna hold back fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand? So, um, could we get a mo, is, what do you think about that, Chris? Is that? So I think that's much better than withholding, tabling till next month, being as, these people need to get paid to move. So, I think that's much better than withholding, tableing till next month, being as, these people need to get paid to move forward in their, in their business also, so.
But, yeah, it's like, it's not only them, they got bills to them, they have to pay for stuff.
It trickles, makes a huge trickle, so, um. So there, you're already at a hundred and forty, so. Well, would you like to make that motion, Steve?
Yeah, I'll make it.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second to withhold fifty-two thousand dollars from the two hundred and fifty-two thousand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, and then, who we would like to discuss a change order uh, for Mill Street, up to Sixth Street, from Mill Street Fifth, or, you know, the short hill between Fifth and Sixth and Mill Street. Yes. Everybody knows it. So, we would like to add that as a change order to the project, if possible.
But we need to know the cost.
Oh, we need to know the cost.
So, uh, something necessarily means it's gonna happen.
Right.
Do we want it both, both ways, one with curb and gutter and one without, and then we decide which way we wanna go? Or, do you guys want it all or nothing?
I do not think curb and gutter on the-
On the hill?
On the road side would be-
On the south side?
Yeah, I don't think that would be-
Somehow you gotta do some kind of scale on the south side.
Only on the creek side?
Most of it's done already, but, yeah. Maybe with and without.
Well, the thing, if you use curb, though, you're gonna solve erosion problems.
What time you coming out? You might have to, you might, you might have to come out at four-thirty. Get light by five.
Well, I'm usually up by three-thirties.
You don't, you don't sleep, don't count for that. You're going to point to WW, right? So, you gotta, you've gotta talk to GM, and GM's gotta talk to WW? Or, or in theory, they could talk to anybody they wanted to? Or WW, the only contractor they could be? No, we don't, right now, we don't, we, we don't have the, honestly, we don't have the financing set aside to do this, other than through this, through this project. Okay, I would, I would say, I would think we're path using WW, but really, we're not. That's right, they gotta come back one more time anyway, so. So, timing wise, we're, we're in fine shape, when they come, whenever they come back, the end of July, August, if we got this planned. So, if you get something figured out, come to the July meeting, and we get it approved, uh, when they come back, the end of July or August, it's actually done, and by whenever that street is, street is done. I think you're gonna have to do some base work. On that street, you could repay that? Nothing. Sure.
But, yes.
And more, and the same thing with that, I mean, I'll, I'll be around, but I mean, you, you, Steve, as your expert, are figuring that out, and you get a price, I mean, go over, go over that before the July twenty-first meeting, so that we've pretty much got the details figured out, so that a recommendation can come here, and, uh, and WW then, we don't, we don't wanna tell them, or, we don't want them to say, well, we're not coming back till September or October now, to do the final lift, because we got this other deal that we're negotiating, you know, to get this other street done, I mean. Get it all put together, and hopefully, it just, it just follows right in with, uh, when they're doing that final effort. Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, that, to me, that would be the ideal thing, is that, the only reason we're really using GM is because we have to, because of the change order. I wasn't anticipating that WW was gonna do all the working. Right, but I don't see them doing it. I mean, I just don't think they wanna come back anymore. I mean, why would, why would they, they're not, they're not street workers, I mean, they're underground workers.
So, would it work, do you think, to put curb on the, uh, south side of that road, um, as far down as the alley, with some type of an intake, that would then take it across to the creek?
Yeah, but it's in rehab, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, it's not gonna crumble if you go into it.
Trying to figure out how we can avoid future always washing out on the south side of that street.
Well, there is a huge catch there, I just don't know where it goes to.
Up on top.
On the box, no, right before the alley, there is.
It goes, the, the water just goes down into that, into that dip, and then it goes, there is a box in there, they go, you have a-
I don't know where the box goes, but there is one there.
It goes across to the north, and then it, there is already a spot for that wa, that water to catch into that, uh, in, in, into that channel, right there. Well, I don't know, I don't, I don't think we have everybody issues with, uh, with, with the water that, once it gets on the ground and going away. What we have issues with is depending on how the water comes from west to east. If it's too much water, it, uh, it washes that alleyway out, and it washes that, uh, that would be the northeast corner of that, of that lot, it just washes that whole hill there. Yeah, but, but, but here, if you look at doing that, I mean, I, I think you, you still want the rest of the street paved from the alley to the east, I mean. So, you know, so somehow, somehow, you gotta keep that incorporated into it.
And there's a garage there, that takes water from the street through the garage, so another garage issue.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a catch base on the all four corner. But it just matters, the center line, the center line on the one on northeast corner of Sixth Street, it, the catch station on the northeast corner of Sixth Street, it goes in a center line, and it, and it goes just across. Same, the same thing in theory, if the one on the northwest corner is working in that hole of sand, the water gets in there, goes, goes to the north, and then comes back to the east. So, so there's, there's a, there's, there's a, there's a fullaway cross section in that intersection. But, it, 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 if, if, if the, if the catch stations on those four corner wouldn't, would take all the water, which most of the time they have been now, since that's been redone, and no water jumped, uh, jumped across that street, and we kept every, everything all in there, then, you know, the water that we're really talking about today, that goes down, and that ha, is really only that half of water, you know, so. But, that is a tricky intersection. I mean, we got that big hump and whatever all there, and we've never have determined yet whether that's serving a purpose, whether it's just a speed bump, or, or if it, if, if it actually is serving a drainage purpose, or if it's humped up that high, because that happens to be where a cross section is, and it needs, and that cross section needed that much, uh, that, that much stuff, I mean, it's-
I said it was for drainage.
That's, yeah. Yeah, that's, you know, whether, whether, whether that, whether that hump needs to be that tall, that much, or whether you can actually go into it, if you redirect, if you, if you redirect the drainage now, coming to, from west to east, you might be able to go into that hump a little bit, and, 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 and change that, but I don't know any better. Storm drainage, no. No, there's, there should be no storm drainage that's gonna affect ninety-three and those streets. All storm drainage basically should be from the alley to the, to, to the west. I mean, because that's, that's where the cross sections are, and that all runs to the north to get into Mill, to Mill Creek. I mean, so, uh, if there's, if there is anything past that alley, it's actually supposed to be then coming back. It's supposed to be coming from, uh, from, from east to west, to get, to get into, uh, into Mill Creek.
Don't, don't look tonight, you won't sleep tonight.
You got your time set up, can you go?
I was five-thirty.
I like to be functional.
And you know where you're meeting, so you're not, like, missing each other.
All right, so, um, we're at East City Council Utility Park Highway nineteen-year-old side.
Utility, they, they did email, uh, park board, like, I thought I talked about one part of it, the others?
We had, um, last month, utility had suggested that those accounts that are over six hundred dollars be certified, did we do that one?
No, we did not.
We didn't have a meeting last month.
Did an email thing, he said, he had it in his email, but we did not do that.
I didn't get an email. We didn't do anything, I didn't do anything last month.
I got an email.
Well, you're right, you did respond, that's right.
I didn't get it.
Okay.
I don't know where your emails go, but I, I look in the junk, and they're not there.
That one wasn't mine, that one came from, the C Henderson one?
Yeah.
Oh.
And I just responded back after I looked at him and said, I think the accounts over six hundred dollars need to be certified, so that we can zero those out, and that it just don't keep getting bigger.
I, and I-
We can, we can start that, tip, yeah, typically, the best time to do that are effective June thirtieth. It's in our ordinance that allow, it allows us to do that, so, we, it's, we can, if you wanna do that motion, you know, we can start a hearing. We'd have to have a hearing the next time, and we can take the accounts that are delinquent, whatever it says in our ordinance, and, uh-
Can you go back to the delinquent ones that were missed, that didn't get assessed to the property taxes last time?
That would be anybody that, everybody that meets that six hundred dollars threshold should be on that list.
Even the ones that didn't get assessed that were missed?
Because it would have built up, you know, so, so they should still be on there.
I'll make that a motion, that we, um, assess the utilities that are over six hundred dollars to the taxes.
Why didn't we say over six hundred dollars, or over six months?
Okay. Sounds good.
Cause there are some thirty or forty dollars on that.
That's, that works.
So, we have a motion to assess, as of June thirtieth, over six hundred or six months. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Financial, end of month?
Uh, did park, did you wanna, did you wanna do-
Oh, park, sorry, did you do?
Um, yeah. Um, so, the, the map was already shown. The, um, planting is all completed up at the museum. They're watering it every other day. Steve and I have encouraged them to just leave the sprinklers go. The fire department is putting water on them the opposite days, um, and I guess, Minda was pretty impressed that, in the heat, the plants are living.
It looks fantastic.
It's a lot of plants.
It's a lot of plants.
Stretch, so.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Thank you to all those that coordinated that project and worked at it.
Financial, end of month?
Uh, there is some end of month stuff in here. Again, like I said earlier, it's not, it's not reconciled, um. Maybe, maybe I'm tripping. Thought I had that. I did have it in the packets, or not packets, in the end of, end of the month for those days review, I thought I saw it here. I don't know if I, I don't know if this cash balance summary was in there or not, I thought I made copies, but maybe-
It is, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. The end of May cash balance, the, the end of May cash balance was, uh, was five hundred and fifty-six, or, five, six, nine, three, oh, five, and the end of the year, end of the month, bank balance is five ninety-five, eight sixty-six, seventy-eight, so, it's forty-five thousand dollars, somehow, in journal entries in a different account, that, that, that the auditors have to somehow get into on our, on our balance sheet, that it's in, it's in our bank, it's in our bank statements. And the next sheet has the bank statements of the five ninety-five, eight sixty-six, seventy-eight, and then the longer sheet that you see here, that, that by, uh, forty-six, six eighty-three, eighty-four, that was assuming that three hundred and one thousand dollar payment that was on the original bill, and that's gonna be down to two hundred thousand now, so, that's- So that that balance should increase to six hundred and forty-seven thousand or so. I suggest for for going in after bills are paid tonight. So far, we got in the first half catches and that was a little over three hundred and thirty, which is well where we should be at. And the local government has come in, which should be about two hundred and forty or fifty in the end of July and it's somewhere around the line. We'll get that check for forty-six to forty-seven thousand. That check will come from the state of Minnesota for the American Recovery Act funds. And then there should be again, when the state of Minnesota gets going with their stuff, should be another eighty thousand that's gonna come in between hopefully between now and September thirtieth. And as soon as Lane gets those final journal entries made and I can get Diane to get those made on the system, we'll try to set up a meeting with our AMI so that we can start going over those fund balances where we're actually at for budget, things like that, so that by July meeting and we come up with this change order or this other information, I can actually show you some sheets as to where stuff is going, how much we got, what we can't can't do. Maybe you can start thinking some some reasonable decisions as to what's gonna come next, if anything. And by that by that July meeting and after Steve has some meetings here, we should be able to get pretty close as to what our final number act be on the street project as our sewer project, I think it's called a sewer project, but that final number is gonna be and what our cash balances and stuff are gonna be on that and what those fund balances are if we got money for another other project. Because how we finance that was with the G O bond for a certain amount that's been necessarily tied to this contract. So we how that was passed to do that bond was that the money could be used for any sanitary sewer related function. So if there are some fund left, then we can start thinking about if we can allocate that somewhere else. And I'm saying sanitary sewer and water will, it's utility, so water would actually fit in there as well. So and hopefully by July, S E H should be getting further along as far as doing that water study and, you know, getting that water flowing.
Welcome, Gage.
So first thing I'd be looking at, I don't have any, I didn't have anything for Amy or Andy to sign other than I think I'm just gonna put them all together on one sheet for March, April, May and June when that when that actually gets reconciled, because right now I do know what the bank balances are, but I just don't know what fund to put in. Yeah, what what you what they're really doing when they're reviewing this is they're is they're saying that these fund balances are the way they're supposed to be. And right now, they would have no way of knowing that these fund balances are where they're supposed to be.
Do we need a motion for the cash balance?
Uh, no.
Or just on the bills?
Just the bills.
Has everyone had a chance to review the bills?
On one of the bills and just to just to reiterate it again, and if they request number eight, it'll be for two hundred thousand dollars.
That one hydrant repair, will we recoup anything from the person who did it?
I should. I mean, it's, yes, we got their information. We should get it all from them. I don't know if she sent that out yet, but yes, we should get it. And they's, I we haven't dealt with their insurance company, but the people themselves are seeing easy to deal with. I mean, he actually called me right after he hit it, whatever morning that was. I didn't know exactly where it was. He said, I could, if your hydrants are back over whatever, I could call the cops.
Okay.
So we looking for a motion on the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Old business.
The only thing I kind of it's not really bills, but kind of, I mean, what I what I'm working towards and we're finally, that computer guy who's been going back and forth as to how to get everything set up in this remote office stuff and sometimes stuff is working, sometimes it's not. Someone needs to be here all week again, trying to do whatever, but I I'm finally firing up along to where I I ended up with a second phone based on some problems I had, whatever. But this week or two weeks ago, I switched or not switched, I had two numbers. I don't know if I'll ever. Eventually, what I'm gonna say is this phone's gonna be, now everything is, before I had everything rolled over, everything on here, my personal stuff, you know, whatever. Now I've got all my cities, because my city stuff rolled over to this to this phone, because and then so sometimes when I what when I when I knew the number or I knew it was for city business, I would answer City of Henderson on this phone. But when I didn't, I didn't know if it was gonna be a bill collector for me or for gonna be a a sham guy or whatever it was gonna be, I didn't I didn't wanna block it, you know? So I picked it up and sometimes it, so now basically I answer everything a hundred percent on here and block whatever I don't recommend on on this one. So I don't know exactly what, I think we're paying Bruce forty-five dollars a month for his phone. I think once I get done with rides and I'll probably be, I'll probably get this for thirty-two or thirty-five or something like that. But what I'm envisioning is this is whoever ends up running the remote office, this this is gonna travel with the office. So that and I'll try to get everything switched over to here. So eventually you're gonna see a different a different number. And, you know, I would I would envision by the end of the year, this being is if somebody's trying to do data processing and doing whatever, I would just turn this phone over to the auditors or anybody that wanted to look at it and say, this is all our official official City of Henderson record correspondence, you know, doing doing whatever. Because personally, I have not had, I don't even know what the number on this phone is. I mean, I have not had a, I haven't had a, I haven't had a call, you know, that's personally come to me on this because nobody would know the number. And I think the only the only ones that ever will see that number, I'll I'll eventually put you guys on you guys on here and I'll say this is this is now the city number. But basically, I'm I'm doing this as the police car cell. I'm doing this as the city office.
Yep.
The city office cell. And the reality would be if anybody needs this or wants to use it for doing whatever or if it's here in the office or whoever it is, that's all that's all I would say. That's how I would set it up. I'm not a hundred percent there yet, but that's what it works. Hello.
Just another comment on old business would be the mud on the floor and the bad the fire alarm still going off. For like twelve years. No, at least a year, twelve months. Actually about eighteen.
And I actually, I let's say I come in here this this day, this month, let's say.
So.
But that is kind of a similar to that. We do have our staffing medical review coming up. I think I saw on an email the twenty-third. And so by the end of the month, we we should know whether, right now, we're still on thirty hours maximum per week for, you know, what we're doing. And we should know by then if we're gonna go up to forty hours a week and if restrictions are going to change as to what's what's happening, you know? So I haven't I haven't signed out this or any of, you know, any, I could just go change it, I guess, but I honestly don't even think about it until I come in here on the Wednesday meeting. And oh, yeah, that's there. That's there. Jeff was changing batteries today. I should have just had him change that.
Revised.
I think we need a later.
Revised meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, do you guys wanna meet? Like that rolling schedule we had last time? Thursday, Thursday morning next or Wednesday morning next week for for Janet and Amy and Thursday morning for you two guys?
Bruce, ready?
He's not. He's gonna have to be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Janet?
No, Wednesday does not work for me. Um, Tuesday.
But you wanna but you wanna push it out two weeks too? I guess I can do that.
Yeah, but then it's being close to the Fourth of July.
Yeah, okay.
Will the twenty-second work?
The twenty-second would work.
Okay.
At what time?
Twenty-second.
At six thirty in the morning.
Is that okay?
I have to be to work at seven thirty, so.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Twenty-second, twenty-fourth, okay for you two guys?
At the hall or at the city building or where?
We'll be here.
Well, here because it'll be all the building.
Okay.
So where are we meeting?
Just here.
Thursday.
At work? You wanna? I got seven o'clock here. Too late?
That's fine.
Twenty-fourth?
We have the fire meeting on the twenty-first, two Monday, seven thirty.
Yeah, that's on.
Well, he's writing down mine. I don't have that page for some reason.
It's the very last one.
You don't have one?
Um, no, I don't need it. I got it written down, but um. Do you need something for this recovery funds or are you just notifying?
I could tell.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, twenty-first, we need to add uh, park board at six fifteen. So the budget and plan should be six forty-five. Maybe you guys come in whenever. And if we may have an earlier one or a special one, depending on where we're at with getting stuff from. And and when when I meet, I'll meet with Keith next week. And if we're gonna change, if he's got any ideas on changing anything or where he wants to where he wants to slot in here or whatever, I guess, we'll just go ahead.
He does have some ideas.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna be looking for a motion to adjourn?
Right on time. I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second?
Huh? What? Oh, no, 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 no. Uh, why do you wanna do? What do you wanna do from here on out with me? You wanna fill somehow do them like this and figure it out on Zoom and microphones? Or do we wanna revert back to pre-cold bed or what do you want it to be?
I would revert back.
What did you do then? You just did it out for YouTube or something?
I did.
Or how did you? Do you just recorded it?
I just recorded it and then Jeff would have the recording. I don't know if anybody.
Okay.
Basically, basically, we reset, I had a user standing off for this, we reset that backup and it went down whatever. Do we keep these mics or do you keep those or what? You didn't donate them?
I'm fine reverting back.
Should we, Jeff, can we do something? Because that thing in the middle never really picked up good audio. I mean, it it really depended upon how loud you talked as to if the people could hear it.
Yeah, yeah, we can. Right. We can shove the tables together.
Under what we're doing right now, what purpose does that thing serve you now? That thing in the middle?
That.
Or just there? But so so now I'm gonna go along with not knocking the door for a year. We have to move that table for 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 fourteen months either.
You're right.
But we have a contract cleaner for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
But but it's sad for that day we're just considering that thing away. I guess, well, obviously, obviously, we haven't rented the roof out yet since we moved it last time. So I would guess by, I think we got it rented a couple of times. So by next month, things will be.
And I like the cleaning guy. I'm not saying that, but I just question his.
So how many you got on Zoom tonight?
I dropped off.
It's a matter of, you gotta take it off of there or Lindsay took it down, you know, and then he would put it put it out. I mean, it's hump because as far as the Zoom, in order to somebody to rethink it or somebody to see it, you have to put that up separately, right? Right? So so that's not an extra step. I mean, if it's on Zoom live, you can see it live, but if somebody, if you wanna see it as a after the fact, if you have to, they have to wait until you put it on. So so this isn't changing that at all. I mean, the only thing is, yeah, without, they don't, nobody, nobody, nobody will be able to see it live. Because while you have one person, so. I really wish people would be a little more interactive with their local governments, but it just doesn't.
They're at home on Facebook.
Waste, waste. It 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 is.
Yeah.
Right. Well, not that I'm worried, but maybe still be re-.
I'm okay with discontinuing Zoom.
I think you're gonna make a motion just a matter of.
I'm okay with discontinuing it.
And the only, you know, I. When we get, how does how does that Jason participate?
In person.
He does. Okay. As long as we don't, if we need him, and as long as we don't have a meeting that night, he should be able to be here. Or or the community's that close enough that he could actually, in theory, schedule food meetings as long as he knew he had to be somewhere.
So now should we look for a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make that motion in a second.
All in favor say aye.